Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting, so I'd like to call to order our regular council meeting. And would Jessica Emerson come up? She's... Okay, well, will Christopher Jackson please come up?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the city of Paramount. We thank you for all that you've done here over the years and even the decades. We thank you for a shalom in the city. We thank you for cooperation between council and staff and sheriffs and churches and businesses and schools. So we thank that we've been able to work together. We thank you for all you've done. We pray you'd give wisdom tonight to the council, that they would make decisions that honor you, that bless the entire community. We pray your blessing on a staff, that they could function really well as they have. And we pray your continued blessing on this city, the prosperity of the city, the shalom of the Lord on this city. In Christ's name, amen. God bless you.
Roll call of council members, please.
Council member Lemons. Council member Olmos. Council member Quara Stallings. Vice Mayor Delgado.
Present.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Here. Can I get a motion to excuse Council member Lemons, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Lemons, I'm sorry. Council member Olmos.
Yes.
Council member Quara Stallings. Vice Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and go right into our presentations, and as we've kind of been doing, we are, as I said, we definitely have some special presentations. This is always probably one of, I think, our favorite part, to see everything that we're out and doing into the community. So, our community services department has actually a very special video to share. This is our adaptive recreation program. And it really is a wonderful program that actually other cities have started to model what we are doing here. I know that our community services department has received calls from other cities about, what are you doing? How are you guys doing this? So it's a great thing. And it offers activities for just, you know, individuals that have just diverse, different disabilities, and it provides just wholesome fun, not just for the individual, but for their entire family to do these activities together. So, let's go ahead and play that video. So I said, I mean, our adaptive recreation program, it offers those with diverse abilities, just new ways to have fun, socialize with friends, and just explore outdoor activities in a really inclusive environment for them. So it was great to see that that late night took place at our community center. So, now would Christopher Jackson please come up again? So, Christopher is a member of the Paramount High School Black Student Union, or BSU. The BSU fosters student growth and development through diversity. They provide an opportunity for students of all races to celebrate black culture, lifestyle, and history. And tonight, we are presenting their group with a proclamation in honor of Black History All right, now if my colleagues will join me at the podium, we'll go ahead and continue. Month. So if the rest of the representatives from the Black Student Union, if you please join us. Yes, so again, tonight, we are presenting the Black Student Union with a proclamation, and thank you for leading us in the pledge. I'm gonna hand this over. And then, before we proceed with the picture, would any of you like to say a few words?
Thank you for acknowledging BSU. We strive to celebrate our culture, but all cultures, and be very intentional by inclusivity, and just spreading education and knowledge about culture, so that we can find more things in common and love one another. So thank you again for having us here, we appreciate the acknowledgement.
Actually, yeah, let's do it in the back. I think that's better.
Yes, I can. Okay, ready? One, two, one, two, three. Another one. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Would John Tanklich, President of Marocan USA, please come join us? For those who may not know, Marocan vinegar is manufactured right here in Paramount. While Marocan USA settled here in Paramount in 1974, the company's history dates back over three centuries. This year, they will be celebrating 375 years as a company and 50 years as a Paramount business. Tonight, I am happy to recognize John with this month's Mayor's Award of Excellence. Since joining Marocan USA in 2007 and becoming president in 2014, John has been a vibrant member of Paramount in a variety of ways. Thanks to John's involvement, Marocan Vinegar joined the Chamber of Commerce in 2008, and John has been a board member since 2010. Focusing on community as cornerstones for their business, Marocan has hosted several open house events for our residents to learn more about what they do. Through their work with the Chamber of Commerce, Marocan is a big supporter of helping other businesses grow in Paramount. They believe that helping other business neighbors ensures the overall success and longevity for our community. John has also served tremendously as a board member for the Paramount Educational Partnership, also known as PEP. To date, Marocan Vinegar has donated $245,000 towards PEP, making Marocan Vinegar one of the largest corporate contributors, in providing scholarships to Paramount students. In addition to that amazing contribution, John's staff also act as PEP scholarship graders and reviewers, helping our students even further. John is part of the Citizens Advisory Board with the Paramount Unified School District, which oversees how they expend their bond money to benefit our students. John, thank you so much for all that you do to make a difference in our community. Your passion for Paramount shows what businesses and community members can accomplish together. Again, congratulations and thank you.
Shall I? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll get a picture in a minute.
In a minute, we both said, oh, I can go back and hold it.
I don't want that to fall down. Okay. A few words, if I may. Thank you very much. And thank you to the Paramount City Council for allowing me to be here tonight, and especially Mayor Aguiayo for this award. Thanks to everyone working in the city, many of which are behind me, for making this city of Paramount such a great place to work. And although I don't live here, I've worked here every day almost for about 16 years, and I can see it would be a great place to live as well. So as the mayor said, our company, Marocan Vinegar, has been making the world's finest rice vinegar in Japan since 1649, 375 years ago. And we are celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. And almost all of those years have been here in the city of Paramount, where we've really fused ourselves into the community fabric. We've done that by being a leading contributor to the Paramount Educational Partnership with the $245,000 over the years. And in a few weeks, that donation total is going to increase significantly, I'm happy to say, as we will make a special donation to recognize the anniversary in this city. Our managing principle at Marocan is value people, serve people. And being from Japan, the owners of Marocan, the Sada family, believe that the fastest way for a nation to become wealthy is to give its people a chance for better education. Marocan first gave $100,000 to the PEP back in 2009, and young people who were born that year are now in high school. We believe this generation now has more opportunities to grow for the future by being fortunate to grow up in this city of Paramount. So we hope we can aspire as others to generously give to this great program. Thank you very much.
Would Dr. John Blake of Children's Dental Health Clinic please come up? Tonight, we are proclaiming February as National Children's Dental Health Month. This is the American Dental Association's annual observance to publicize the benefits of good oral health for children. This year's slogan is Healthy Habits for Healthy Smiles. Many people are consuming foods and drinks high in sugar more than ever before. For example, in the U.S., an average individual consumes approximately 50 gallons of sugary beverages per year. This is why it's so important for families to prioritize their children's dental health. This month, we are presenting our proclamation to the Children's Dental Health Clinic. They are a nonprofit that provides dental services to our young residents who may have trouble getting access to such care. They are a great resource for our community. I'd like to say a few words.
Well, thanks, Mayor Aguiayo and council members. Great to see everyone, lots of familiar faces. And I'm really glad the city of Paramount has a business producing vinegar and not soda, so that's wonderful. But it's so, it's an honor really to treat some of the patients, and especially those with some special needs, which is really being a hospital-located program. I think that's where we really shine in some of the care we're able to deliver. But just great working with the city, and thanks so much, Joel.
Now, I know that the group from the Black Student Union already came up, but I actually do have something that I'd like, so if you guys would like to come up while I go ahead and read this. Yes, please. This is important. Here in Paramount, we are proud to recognize February as Black History Month. This is a time to reflect and honor the rich history of African-American heritage that has shaped our nation. Black History Month was pioneered by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a historian and educator who, in 1926, established a week-long celebration. This year's theme, Art of Resistance, highlights the artists who use their crafts to uplift African-Americans and inspire the nation. From the civil rights movement to advancements in art, science, and culture, to the contributions of African-Americans that have been instrumental in shaping the world we live in today. This month serves as a reminder of the ongoing journey towards equality and justice for all, and it is our honor to take part in this recognition. So again, thank you. To be sure that... Oh, the individual? Absolutely.
Do you want to do another shot with this group? Do it differently?
Okay. Yes, we'll stay with you. So come right here. Thank you. I think it was important that, you know, that we recognize, you know, what we had planned in it. Again, I think it's important, just like my colleagues. So, again, thank you. So now, I all have, you know, I mean, this is, again, this is great that we get to do this. Now, we have the Gateway City's COG Gold Energy Action Award, and would Hector de la Torre, Executive Director of the Gateway City's Council of Governments, please join us? Paramount takes pride in its green initiatives and efforts to be a more sustainable community. For decades, the city has been on a mission to be eco-friendly, conserve energy, and help the environment. We have been recognized for our efforts in a variety of ways. We won LA County's Green Leadership Award. The National Arbor Day Foundation named us Tree City USA for a fifth year in a row. The League of California Cities has given us the Beacon Award numerous times. The South Coast Air Quality Management District gave us its Model Community Achievement Award. And now, for the third year in a row, we have earned the Gateway City's Gold Energy Action Award. This award recognizes cities who participate in the Gateway City's Energy Working Group throughout the year, and those who continually improve energy efficiency and produce sustainable achievements in their city. There are bronze, silver, and gold levels. I am very proud that our city has continued to receive gold status and is a leader among the other cities in this distinction. Hector is the Executive Director of the Gateway City's Council of Governments and will present the award. You'd like to say a few words?
Some do, some don't. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm Hector de la Torre. I run the Gateway City's Council of Governments, which is just across the parking lot. For those of you that don't know, the Gateway City's Council of Governments is a joint powers authority. It's a collaboration of 27 cities and 11 unincorporated areas, roughly from East LA down to Long Beach, everything in between. Over 2 million population in this area. If it was one city, we would be the fifth-largest city in America. If it was one state, we would be the 38th-largest state in America. But we're just a small part of LA County. And so what we do is we collaborate on things that spill over city lines. Transportation is the big one, environment, obviously, housing and homelessness, economic development, and just this year, the board has approved Health and Wellness, Population Health. So we will be embarking on that as well. But for today, I wanted to recognize the city of Paramount for being a gold winner for the third year in a row. That is a true dedication to sustainability, to combating climate change, and to mitigating pollution. Clearly, in this region, we have a lot of pollution, and so we need to do things to mitigate that. And that is what the city of Paramount is doing, by improving its facilities, by having EVs in their fleet, and other accomplishments that will clean up our emissions in this region. I also want to give a little bit of a preview, that for this next year, we are hoping to launch Empower in our region, which is a resident-based program. So, the current program, the one that they're winning the award for, is just for cities. But we want to bring Empower, which is a program that's already in the Central Valley, already in parts of LA City, and in the Inland Empire, to here. And that is all of the green technologies that are available that are subsidized for residents, things like solar roofs, like EVs, used EVs, things like energy efficiency, things for the home. And right now, we are talking to some folks about bringing an air conditioner replacement program for window air conditioners, which a lot of people have, but bringing in brand-new, more efficient window air conditioners that are installed by the team, so that they're installed properly and don't, you know, waste that cold air going right back out the window. So, these are all programs that are part of it, and some others that I didn't mention, we are bringing those here to the Gateway Cities, and we'll promote it with residents so that they can benefit as well. We all need to do our share. And so, again, thank you to the city of Paramount, because you have done your share three years in a row and have won this great award. Thank you.
Okay, would Frances Kuo, Partner from the PUN Group LLP, please join us? Paramount has a long history of responsible fiscal management and reporting. One of our most important jobs is to be conservative and careful with the public's money. Our budgets are balanced, and we keep a large reserve of funds to protect our operations. As part of this process, the Financial Department produces an annual comprehensive financial report. This document is always easy to understand and completely transparent about our finances. It is so good that it wins awards every year. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States in Canada has given Paramount its Award of Excellence for more than three decades. This is the highest form of recognition a government can achieve for financial reporting, and we are honored once again for 2021, '22. Frances is an auditor and here to present the award.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff, and Resident of the City. My name is Frances Kuo. I'm the audit partner with the PUN Group. The PUN Group-
but bringing in brand-new, more efficient window air conditioners that are installed by the team, so that they're installed properly and don't, you know, waste that cold air going right back out the window. So these are all programs that are part of it, and some others that I didn't mention. We are bringing those here to the Gateway Cities, and we'll promote it with residents so that they can benefit as well. We all need to do our share. And so, again, thank you to the city of Paramount, because you have done your share three years in a row and have won this great award. Thank you.
Okay, would Francis Kuo, partner from the Penn Group LLP, please join us? Paramount has a long history of responsible fiscal management and reporting. One of our most important jobs is to be conservative and careful with the public's money. Our budgets are balanced, and we keep a large reserve of funds to protect our operations. As part of this process, the Financial Department produces an annual comprehensive financial report. This document is always easy to understand and completely transparent about our finances. It is so good that it wins awards every year. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has given Paramount its Award of Excellence for more than three decades. This is the highest form of recognition a government can achieve for financial reporting. And we are honored once again for 2021-22. Francis is an auditor and here to present the award.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff, and residents of the city. My name is Francis Kuo. I'm the audit partner with the Penn Group. The Penn Group is engaged to audit the city's financial statement from the fiscal year June 30, 2023. So in order for the, to receive the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting, a government needs to go beyond the minimum requirement of generally accepted accounting principle to prepare the annual comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirits of transparency and full disclosure. So this is the 40th year consecutive year the city has received the award from GFOA since 1982. So it is my honor here to present the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year and the June 30 of 2022 to the city of Paramount. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and thank you to our finance staff. You know, we definitely appreciate the work you do. And you have staff and Kim from the Finance Department. If you guys can actually come up, so we can take a picture with you guys. Okay, and this concludes our presentations for the evening. So, thank you. Thank you for making Paramount such a great place. All right, let's go ahead and move on. Do we have any City Council public comment updates?
No updates, Madam Mayor.
Okay, public comments?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. We have two this evening. One is in person and one is written. We will go with the in-person one first, and then Ms. Luce, our city clerk, will read the emailed one. Our first speaker's comment tonight, Madam Mayor, is from Mr. Alex Iñárez. Mr. Iñárez?
Good afternoon, ladies of the council. I'm a 50-year resident of the city of Paramount. I've been advocating for handball for the last 14 years. This is year 14. I'm glad you brought up finances, because in the first year, I requested that not just myself, but 50 men showed up to this council, and we requested that our handball courts not be torn down. We wanted to keep our old handball courts. Those handball courts were the first outdoor recreational sport that we had in this city. Before Paramount became Paramount, we had handball courts, and we were discriminantly torn down. We showed up with petitions, we showed up in person, and we wanted to keep our handball courts. Now, I had three meetings with city leaders. One with the city manager in September, and then I followed up with meetings with the mayor. Thank you, Ms. Aguayo and Ms. Quayra Stallings, for, actually, this time, we actually got a chance to speak. I actually had more time than the three minutes I got here, which I am practicing my oxen ear voice, so I could be able to get more information out. Because with three minutes, you're very allocated with what we could do. But 14 years ago, the city had $19 million in reserves. Now, they have $31 million in reserve. A while back in the meeting, it said, the city said it was too expensive to build our handball courts. Do you know how much we would save by mental health illness in young men to avoid the crimes that they might get into, to avoid the things that they might find derogatory that you've come up with? Street takeovers, robberies, whatever it is that this cowardice survey was made up with, to slander our sport and slander the people in this community? I myself have never been a gang member, as I mentioned before. You know, now we have $31 million. You have $31 million in the city. Save it for a rainy day. You pride yourself on the propaganda because of your elections coming up. You have 12 events for senior citizens, 12 events for senior citizens. Not one for young men between the ages of 18 and 60, not one. And you haven't had one event where any men come up here at any point in the last 27 years. Men do not longer get involved in the city, because you've removed all the opportunities that we had. You removed the boxing, you removed the adult softball, you removed the soccer. You removed every social recreational event that we had, where we used to gather and come together to find out what's going on in our city. And you removed that. You know what we have? We have the Latinas, we have the Women's Club, we have the Heritage Foundation. We have about seven Women's Club, all women. We have not one Men Club. Wait, I take that back. It was the Knights of Columbus, right? The Knights of Columbus, a Catholic school. It's a Catholic organization. That doesn't involve the rest of the community. I ask that you stop discriminating against and rebuild our handball courts. It was the oldest handball recreational sport that we had in the city, and you discriminately, cowardishly removed them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iñárez.
And now we'll go to the, I'm sorry, Madam, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, now we'll go to the written public comment. Ms. Luce?
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. This comment is from Mr. Luis Rivera, and it's a little bit long. I'll read it as quickly as I can, but in case I don't make it through, a copy has been placed on the dais for each council member and staff. "Good evening, City Council. I want to express my concern regarding the street parking issues, especially in the Sands neighborhood, which is where I live. As a matter of fact, I am writing this public comment as a car is currently blocking my driveway. It is no secret to anyone that Paramount has extreme street parking issues throughout most, if not all, of its neighborhoods. I have worked in many cities in Los Angeles and Orange County and have yet to see any other city facing the extreme street parking issues that we face here in Paramount. In fact, other cities have tackled this problem by issuing parking permit only in high-density neighborhoods. I have seen cities like Buena Park, Anaheim, Pasadena, Santa Ana, et cetera, et cetera, issue permit parking only, helping to fix this issue. You can even go ahead and use the neighborhood north of Alondra on Gundry and Brayton Street as an example. They have permit parking only, and they do not have to deal with the struggle of having to find a parking spot every single day. I emailed Mr. Eric Wosick regarding the process to apply for parking permit only in the neighborhood. I will go on and submit this request to start a petition for neighborhood parking only on this side of Paramount. However, I do not agree with the process, because it is unfair. We are talking about a neighborhood where at least half of the residents are renters. If you ask a homeowner if they would agree with permit parking only, they would most likely be in favor, because we are long-term residents. Meanwhile, renters will come and go and really don't care about the neighborhood. I have seen this with my own eyes throughout the three years that I have lived here. I have seen people come and go every month, some even bringing in five or more cars for one small, one-bedroom, one-bath ADU. It also makes it unfair for people that have so many cars to vote in this petition, because they will obviously be against the petition when they are clearly the problem in the first place. I will also like to invite you to take a drive down all the streets in the Sands after 5:00 PM and see how many cars are parked in front of a fire hydrant, blocking the sidewalk, blocking the driveways, or in front of a red curb, making it dangerous for pedestrians or cars on the road, especially because of how narrow the streets are over here. This has been going on for years, and the city does nothing about it. In fact, can we even blame the people who park in front of hydrants or red curbs? The city has allowed this problem to worsen, and when an accident happens, because it is bound to happen, I want to see the city take full responsibility. I have witnessed cars almost hitting other cars, and children from Los Cereals Elementary nearly being hit by cars due to vehicles being parked on red curbs, creating blind spots for oncoming traffic. I remember several months ago, this idea of permit parking was brought up in a city council meeting while discussing ADUs and how they bring parking issues. And Councilmember Peggy Lemon said adding permit parking will not fix this issue, because whether there is permit parking only or not, the cars will still need to be parked somewhere. That, however, is wrong. Permit parking will encourage people to actually use their driveways." The comment continues, however, the time has lapsed.
Thank you, Heidi, and we all do have a copy of that email. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. I need a motion for the consent calendar, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayra Stallings?
Vice Mayor Delgado Díaz?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes. All right, and we do have some old business. This is a public hearing. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there a report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, very brief. Both number 11 and 12 are related, so I'll handle the report for both items. Very, very brief, as I mentioned, and then we can go through the public hearing procedure. Since this city was incorporated, we've been utilizing both the LA County Health Department for inspections, and we've been, this is related to health and sanitation. We incorporate by reference the LA County Health and Safety Code into our code. We also do that with the county traffic code as well. State law does require us to go through certain procedures before we adopt this. And one of them is to have a first reading and set a date for the public hearing. We did that back in January, and the public hearing is set for this evening. So with that, it is recommended to hold a public hearing and to adopt both ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance number 1179 and 1180. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. For this one, we need to go ahead and see if there's any comments in favor.
There have been no public comments submitted, Madam, in favor or opposed.
Okay, perfect. So I need a motion to go ahead and close this.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayra Stallings? Vice Mayor Delgado Díaz?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes. And now, I need a motion for the item.
Second.
Roll call.
We'll need to do it each item.
Yes, so this is for...
It's 1179.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayra Stallings? Vice Mayor Delgado Díaz?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes.
That will be brought back for adoption at the March 12 meeting.
Thank you, Heidi. And now for ordinance 1180, to go ahead and open the hearing.
There have been no public comments submitted in favor or opposed to the ordinance, Madam Mayor.
Okay, can I please get a mo?
Motion to close public hearing.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayra Stallings? Vice Mayor Delgado Díaz?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes. And now I need a motion to introduce ordinance number 1180.
So moved.
Okay, so there's a first and a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayra Stallings? Vice Mayor Delgado Díaz?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our new business. The next is an approval. Do we have a report?
We absolutely do, Madam Mayor. The first four items in our new business all deal with public safety. So we're gonna kick it off with an idea that we mentioned you during the goal-setting session last month, and that is approval of a contract with Southwest Patrol to start conducting neighborhood patrols citywide. We're proposing this as a supplement to our current public safety service, and we want to make it clear that this is not something that we're turning to out of displeasure or dissatisfaction with the current job that our hard-working deputies are performing day in and day out. We're just unable to add law enforcement services during this current public safety labor shortage, and our deputies tell us that there are definitely issues at the court level of the criminal justice system that allow repeat offenders to go back on the street again. We now turn to private security as an idea to act as a crime deterrent. As Maggie will now tell us, the uniformed security officers would simply observe and report if they see a crime in progress. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Maggie Mattson, who will handle the item. Maggie?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This amended agreement for private security services is essential for keeping homes, businesses, and public places safe. While the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department handle public safety and emergency law enforcement services, private security services can offer an extra layer of personalized protection throughout our city. As a way of background, on May 23, 2023, the City Council approved a service agreement with Southwest Patrol to provide park patrols and customer service contact as part of the Community Services Department's park supervision services. On June 27, 2023, the city expanded its services with Southwest Patrol to include opening and closing field space for youth leagues, reporting graffiti and security issues, and acting as customer service ambassadors for park patrons. Since July 2023, Southwest Patrol has provided a uniform guard to assist with security screenings at city council meetings. For the past nine months, the city has established a strong partnership with Southwest Patrol. There is continuous communication between city staff, law enforcement personnel, and the private security guards assigned to service the city. At the City Council Goal Setting Workshop, the City Council discussed increasing community safety by providing dedicated neighborhood patrols for the purpose of crime prevention. Unfortunately, the city is unable to add additional LASD deputies for deployment due to the county's contract growth moratorium. However, neighboring cities like Lakewood and Bellflower are utilizing private security as deployment mechanisms for neighborhood safety enhancements. The feedback from their community members has been positive, indicating that the additional patrols have resulted in an increased sense of safety and security. There are benefits to neighborhood patrol services. Private security guards can be an effective mechanism to help prevent crime by providing visible presence, employing active observation skills, and delivering proactive communication of violations to law enforcement. Their ability to patrol, monitor, and report serves as a functional deterrent to criminals and allows for a broader coverage area than that which can be accomplished by law enforcement personnel alone. Public safety proposes to take advantage of these benefits by expanding our private security patrol services so that additional crime prevention support can be provided to our residential and commerce, excuse me, and business communities. The amended agreement would include two unarmed security guards performing vehicle patrols from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, seven days a week, including holidays. The guards would each be assigned to patrol beats and conduct grid-pattern patrols covering all residential and business neighborhoods. The initial deployment would address crime trends, enhancing the community's sense of safety and security. Preventative issues would include vandalism, robberies, thefts, street takeovers, and commercial burglaries. Their preliminary function is simply to observe and report. Under the direction of public safety, the SAO Special Problems Deputy would be tasked to work directly with Southwest Patrol to ensure that all public safety concerns are mitigated through active patrols. The guards would check in with the Sheriff's Department and be tasked to patrol specific areas of concern. Public safety will oversee their deployment and ensure that all city areas are proactively patrolled. It is imperative to note that this is an enhancement, not a replacement for law enforcement services. There is currently no additional fiscal impact on the city. Funding for this service will be offset by the unused fund for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Mental Evaluation Team, which was included in the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. As mentioned, we cannot expand our law enforcement services due to the sheriff's growth moratorium. So the dedicated MET unit continues to be on hold. We have also experienced some challenges securing a clinician through the Department of of Mental Health on a part-time basis. We will continue to work with LASD and the Department of Mental Health to offer this dedicated unit in the near future. As far as the fiscal impact, the cost for the two guards is $100,800, and staff has included a 10% contingency of $10,080, bringing the total of the agreement not to exceed This contingency is necessary to provide flexibility for staff so that we may provide security services beyond the proposed contracted hours to address any additional issues or concerns that may arise. Given the effectiveness of Southwest Patrol in their current capacity with the city, along with the positive references that staff has received from the city of Bellflower, the city of Lakewood, and the Sheriff's Department, we are recommending that the city expand Southwest Patrol services to include late-night and early-morning crime prevention patrols. This concludes my report. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you Maggie, is there any questions or comments?
No.
Madam Mayor, I just have one. Much-needed service. What is a communication system? So is it a walkie-talkie system? So they're, they observe and report, but how do they communicate with LA County Sheriff?
Yes, so they wouldn't utilize any specific radios. The communication would be just like any other citizen, if they observed something, they are to call it in by using their cellphone.
Do they call in 911 or what?
Would call Lakewood Station.
They would call Lakewood Station.
And that's currently the, the method that we have in place right now with the security guards that patrol our parks. So we do communicate with them on a continuous basis if they have any concerns, if they need deputies to address, let's just say there's the concern at a specific park, they make us aware of it, but as far as direct communication with the Sheriff's Department, it would be by phone only.
By phone only, okay.
Any other questions or comments? No, okay, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings. Vice Mayor Delgado Dyo.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes, all right, so we're gonna move on to ordinance 1182. Can we please have the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mr. Kavanaugh will handle this item, our city attorney. John?
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Madam Mayor, members of the council, how are you tonight?
Thank you.
The item we have before you tonight is ordinance number 1182, which we're asking the council to approve some amendments to the vehicle speed and exhibition of speed ordinance that was adopted some time ago. Just to give you an idea, I'm gonna be probably citing some, a lot of vehicle code sections, so don't get too confused by them. I'll give you kind of a general summary of what we're trying to accomplish, so you understand what our objectives are, so just want to let you know ahead of time. Oops. As you know, back in September of 2020, almost four years ago, this city council took bold, decisive, and proactive action in adopting two comprehensive regulatory ordinances for establishing the civil forfeiture of nuisance vehicles engaged in motor vehicle speed contests or exhibition of speeds, and ordinance number 1135, which prohibited spectators at speed contests. This comprehensive program that the council adopted has really been largely successful due to the extraordinary efforts by both the city's Public Safety Department and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. This is a team effort that really, really was required because it's, it's kind of a complex program, but because we have so many agencies and so many people involved, it really has worked to be very cohesive and effective, and it would not happen without both the Public Safety and the Sheriff's Department and the DA's office in implementing this program that you wanted to start. As a result, street racing in the city of Paramount has been reduced, and other jurisdictions in California have expressed interest in establishing similar programs all the way from down Southern California at the end near San Diego to Northern California. So we, you have been pioneers in this, and a lot of cities are also interested in getting these type of ordinances to combat street racing. It's, it's really kind of a big problem here in California and across the nation. However, as with all programs, the city council always is interested in improving programs to the next level, and we have done that. Since the program's inception, both the city attorney's office, the deputy district attorney, public safety, and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department have really had the opportunity to gauge the effectiveness of the program with the objective of presenting to the city council improved operations and additional enforcement tools. We'll go into some of those right now. Whenever you have a program that's either even civil or criminal, where someone's property rights are going to be either taken away or seized or whatever, the law requires, both in the US and state constitutions, that there be effective procedural due process, substantive due process, and procedural due process. And so, part of this ordinance, we had to implement and put those provisions in there. So under ordinance 1134, the Public Safety Department is required to conduct an investigation as to the address of the driver, the registered owner of the vehicle, and any lien holder of the vehicle, and these people could be potential claimants down the line. What happens then is that we have to have a notice of an administrative hearing to determine the legal validity of the seizure, because when a vehicle is involved in a street racing or takeover or exhibition of speed, the sheriff's deputy will usually conduct an arrest of the driver, and the car is subsequently impounded. That car, that vehicle's impounded, but immediately we have to notify these claimants, and I refer to these three different individuals, that there's gonna be an administrative hearing done to determine whether or not the seizure of the vehicle is, complies with the law. So that's the due process, to give them an opportunity to come to a hearing. And secondly, that hearing has to be done by an independent hearing officer. So in other words, you can't have somebody within the city doing a hearing because there's an inherent conflict. And so, many, many years ago, the California Supreme Court held that you have to have an independent hearing officer to conduct a hearing. So Public Safety has to coordinate all that very quickly. And so under the current ordinance, the notice of the administrative hearing must be mailed to the individual no later than two days following the seizure of the vehicle. Okay, that's pretty quick. Moreover, Public Safety is required to coordinate with that independent hearing officer to hold what is known as a post-seizure hearing within two days of a request from the Public Safety Director or claimants for such a hearing. Okay, so basically, there's an incident that happens, Public Safety then has to find out who the driver is, the registered owner is, and the, any lien holder, give notice out within that period of time. In addition to that, those incident reports are forwarded to my office and to the deputy district attorney who determine whether or not an administrative hearing is even appropriate under the circumstances. This has to be done quickly, and then there has to be a actual hearing within two days. Well, it's been found that such a short notice and a scheduled hearing become a challenge to both the Public Safety Department and the potential claimants in the attendance of these independent administrative hearings. So what we would like to do, and in order to alleviate these changes and still provide the necessary legal due process to the claimants, we're recommending that the ordinance provisions be amended to extend the notification time from two days to five days, and to extend the scheduled administrative hearing date from two days to 10 days. It's my opinion that that still complies with the, with the substantial and procedural due process requirements under the law, but it also affords the claimants an opportunity to attend a hearing and also give Public Safety opportunity to conduct their investigative research, and my office to look at everything and get this done. So we're just giving a little bit more time to get that through. In the existing ordinance, what we tried to do is we wanted to combat street racing under the California Vehicle Code, and that was under 23109A and C. And that basically is your basic speed contests, where you have maybe driver against driver, speeding along, racing, and then you have exhibition of speed, which can be anything run from someone performing donuts at an intersection by themselves in the middle of the night, or in front of an audience, or, or something similar to that. So the purpose of those two was to address your concerns that there was speed racing or street intersection takeovers that were happening within the city. So we kind of confined those sections to that, to that type of incidents. Under California Vehicle Code Section 23103, we have what is known as reckless driving, and that's defined as a person who drives a vehicle upon a highway and will for a wanton disregard, willful wanton is a legal term, basically for disregard of safety of persons or property. We have been told, and this is a result of the deputies observing, that many, many times that these drivers are participating in these intersection takeovers not only cause considerable damage to the street intersections, but also create potential hazards to the health and safety of the public. And that is, you're having a large audience around the takeover, and you have residential people that may be nearby, so it's creating those potential hazards. And reckless driving is a section under the code that allows law enforcement to deal with that. Now how does that apply to what we're trying to achieve here tonight? There's another section under the Vehicle Code, and that's 14602.7. Law enforcement can obtain a warrant to seize a vehicle when they observe committing that vehicle in violation of the reckless driving statute. So if they see somebody, and they're present, in their presence seeing somebody doing reckless driving, doing a donut around people, and there's that, they can immediately, if they cannot apprehend the perpetrator right at that time, but they see it happening, this section allows law enforcement to obtain a warrant for that vehicle and to go and get a warrant to seize a vehicle and later to be impounded. So in other words, this section of the code allows law enforcement, if they cannot immediately apprehend the perpetrator, this happens when the perpetrator and vehicle may leave before the deputy gets there. The deputy may see it, but the driver leaves the scene, and so, you know, they're not gonna be chasing him, but the person is gone. Or the deputy arrives at the scene, but the crowd creates kind of a barricade to keep the deputy from coming in to get the car, and they create like an exit lane for the driver to leave, and this has happened a couple of times. So the driver of the vehicle then leaves the scene, but the sheriff's deputy see it, but now they're gone. Under this code section, they can go in for a warrant to go find that vehicle because they've seen it, and then bring it back, and they can have it impounded, okay? Furthermore, if the deputies are able to view the license plate of the vehicle involved in this unlawful incident, then under Section 14602.7, they can, as I said, obtain a warrant for the vehicle and seize it for 30 days. That also can be used as part of a seizure or forfeiture under our code, once that gets done. So what it is, is that we're asking the council to amend the provisions to add Section 23103 reckless driving to our ordinance as a violation, because what the city is doing is to, is to create additional enforcement tools. This is, if you, if you will, it's kind of like tools in our quiver, our law enforcement quiver, to use to try to go after these vehicles when they commit these, either reckless driving in these intersection takeovers or such others, so that they can get these vehicles later on. And the reason is because the city is considering adding software to allow for live feed, and I want to emphasize, live feed, on the city's current flock camera system. This live feed will assist the deputies in the following scenario. Number one, when there's a call for service of an intersection takeover, which happens, a resident will call and say, there's a, an intersection takeover and somebody's doing donuts, and there's a crowd here, and it's disrupting, so they make a call for service that's actively, that's actively occurring. Law enforcement then, if there's a scenario where they can't get there right in time, or if they get there and the person is gone, they can access that live feed immediately and watch it in real time, the actual intersection takeover in real time, what is occurring, and then should the patrol car be unable to get to the unlawful event before the perpetrator leaves the location? If they're, if the perpetrator is able to leave the scene of the unlawful event, but the camera picks up the license plate of the vehicle while the deputy views it live, then a warrant can be obtained to seize a vehicle under that code section, that Vehicle Section I mentioned before, 14602.7, for violating the reckless driving. Now, the reason why it's important we're asking you to add the reckless driving to it is because law enforcement can't get a warrant for a violation of 23109ARC. They can get a warrant for the reckless driving. So we want to make sure, we want to cover our bases by allowing the deputies additional tools and, in using these, these cameras to be able to view these occurrences live, and then be able to track these cars down with a warrant, impound it, and then we would go on the regular procedure that we're doing. So what we're trying to do is give more teeth to our ordinance, more opportunities for the deputies, not only for the deputies, but Public Safety in my office, to go after these street takeover drivers, which have been very successful, but we think it'll give us more opportunity to get them in case they leave, but at the same time, really maintain the due process, because again, there has to be a live, there has to be the ability to either see it, see it, or see it on camera live. So in other words, you can't see the video a day later and say, okay, let's go after the car. It's gotta be at that particular time, okay? But it's an additional tool to allow the law enforcement to be able to get these cars and then get them off the street. So we're asking you to introduce ordinance number 1182, place it on the February 27th agenda for adoption, and that will give us more opportunity to curb and combat street racing in the city of Paramount. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Deputy District Attorney Kelly Taitman here, and also, of course, Maggie Mattson from the Public Safety Department to answer any questions that you may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments over here?
No.
Here, Councilmember Olmos.
Yeah, I do. So question. So it says if LASD deputies are able to view the license plate of the vehicle involved, they're, so they have to see a live feed, but what if like a resident catches it and gives them like a feed? Are they able to still get a warrant?
Kelly, where are you?
Hey Kelly.
Good evening. No, 23103 is a specific code section in 14602.7. The element of the crime is in an officer's presence, so it can't be a resident, has to be a law enforcement officer.
Okay, well that kind of, that's tough, right? I mean, and that's just, that's the code, that's, that's what it is.
That's an element of the crime.
These guys are overworked, how are they supposed to see all this like happen? These guys are too busy.
Well, that's one of the interesting things about the flock camera system and the potential upgrade.
Yeah, for sure.
Is the way, and I'm not an expert in flock, but the way it is explained to me is that if they're on one side of town and a call for service comes in, they're able to patch into the system, so they can, if they view it live, even on their phone, that, that qualifies as in their... that, that qualifies as in their presence.
Okay. So, they're, because they're visually seeing it live happen, or, okay. So, they're seeing it with their eyes, okay?
Right.
Clearly understood.
I'm sorry?
Clearly understood.
Okay. It, it is, it is an additional tool that I think will be helpful, especially in the experience we've had where it's very difficult for the deputy sometime to be on the scene right away, because then they're gone, or the audience spectators around there block them, and then the car goes away. But on the, by having the reckless driving statute included, we can now use that to track the car down later on and impound it.
Can I just add to that, why it's so important to add twenty-three, one, oh, three? Because of the impound ability under fourteen, six, oh, two, point, seven, is if an officer witnesses a street racing incident occurring in an intersection, but can't identify the driver, then there can be no criminal prosecution, because you can't identify who the perpetrator was. So, a criminal action is not going to happen, but if you're adding twenty-three, one, oh, three to be able to impound the car under a warrant, you can still pursue a civil action for forfeiture.
Kelly, say that again. So, you necessarily don't have to see the person. You, you can get the vehicle, because you have license plate.
Correct.
Regardless who is driving the car.
Yes.
That's for a civil action, not for a criminal action. For a criminal action, you have to have an identification of the driver.
And that's a good point, Kelly. I think it's important for the council, keep in mind that the whole purpose of the program that you all created was to create a public nuisance on the vehicle, okay? Now, if they stop the driver in the midst of, of, of the intersection takeover, and they arrest the driver, then the DA's office will take care of the criminal aspects of it. But under this, the driver may not either be known, or they can't pick him up, or there's an argument, hey, wasn't there. But see, we're only interested in the vehicle. So, if we get a clear reading of the plate through the camera system, then the vehicle's what we're after. It may not make any difference where the driver is, and there may not be some criminal action against the driver, but for my purposes, I got the car. That's why I think it's important. And thank you, Kelly, for bringing that up.
Madam Mayor, may I just touch upon, this code will definitely pair with the comment that was made, I think it was during the last council meeting, where one of the council members asked if there was technology in our city that can actually capture these violations. And I did introduce Flock Safety. We have been in communication with them, and we hope to bring that item soon. We're hoping that we'll be able to share what we're going to be doing, and it's definitely going to be an enhancement to the Sheriff's Department. And they will be equipped to be able to view the incidents that are being recorded through a tablet, through their cell phone, and maybe even their mobile digital computer that's in their black and white unit.
Thank you, Maggie. Do we have any other questions or comments?
One other thing to add to, Maggie, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you mentioned that this was their first kind of go at it here in Southern California?
That's correct. So, currently, Flock Safety is in communication with other cities such as Lancaster, but we would be the first to actually deploy the technology of surveillance, which would be combined with the license plate reader. So, again, we're currently working on the report at this time. We're hoping to bring this to you for the upcoming city council meeting.
If I could just add off what you said, even though we don't have that technology right now, adding twenty-three, one, oh, three right now would still be useful, because even if an officer arrives at the intersection and witnesses the car in person and gets a license plate, by adding twenty-three, one, oh, three today, or at the next hearing, it's still useful. So, we don't need to wait for the technology for this to be helpful for the deputies.
Mr. Kevan, we are two thousand first spectators. What's the fine, again, for, for the, we confiscate the car, is there a fine for the driver? Can you refresh my memory?
Well, that's, I'll defer that to Kelly, but as far as any type of fine for criminal, you'll take that. There's no civil fine for it.
There's no civil.
We don't have an administrative citation for the driver, because we can't, we can't do both. We have to do, get the car or the arrest, but we can't do the arrest and administrative citation.
Oh.
Right.
Okay.
And actually, it makes sense, and we kind of talked about it to us, is that administrative citation is more effective.
Spectators, because they're there, okay?
Right.
With a, with a vehicle, the driver, an administrative citation is just to the driver. We can't take the car. We can't impound the car. We, we can cite the driver, he gets back, he or she gets back in the car and takes off. So, we'd rather be in a position to be able to make the arrest, which the law requires, impound the car, and then be able to for, do the forfeiture later on, or get her into a stipulated agreement and judgment with them. That's why.
All right. There isn't any other questions or comments? I need a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Vice Mayor Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Aguirre?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
All right. And next, we actually have an oral report. This is the twenty-twenty-three Annual Uniform Crime Report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, continuing with our public safety theme, we'll now hear from Lakewood Station Captain Dan Holgane. Captain Holgane will provide us with information on the twenty-twenty-three crime statistics, and he'll also give us his insight as to what these figures tell us. So, with that, here's our Lakewood Station Captain, Captain Dan Holgane. Dan?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Aguirre, fellow council members, for having me here tonight, on behalf of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and the, the men and women and professional staff probably serving the city of Paramount. I am pleased to have this opportunity to give the safety report. So, this twenty-twenty-three Annual Crime Report will pertain to Uniform Crime Reporting Program, which collects crime data of reported violent and property crimes in the nation, which are classified as Part One crimes. These include violent crimes consisting of homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assaults, along with property crimes to include burglary, grand theft auto, theft, and arson. So, in twenty-twenty-three, we had a slight increase of four percent in all Part One crimes when compared to twenty-twenty-two. We had seventeen hundred and twenty-four incidents in twenty-twenty-two, compared to seventeen hundred and eighty-nine last year. When it comes to crimes against persons, we had an overall increase of nineteen percent. We had three hundred and ninety incidents in twenty-twenty-two compared to three hundred and sixty-eight last year. And if we go per the, per each crime, first one is homicides. Our homicides, there was a seventy-five percent decrease in homicides. We had four in twenty-twenty-two. Last year, we had one. This homicide occurred early February of last year, and the suspect was quickly identified and arrested. When it comes to rapes, we had a forty percent decrease of our rapes from twenty in twenty-twenty-two compared to twelve last year. Of the twelve last year, ten were known suspects, usually family members and acquaintances. Aggravated assaults. So, if you see this aggravated assaults, this was our largest increase in all of Part One crimes. This is a thirty-four percent increase compared to last year. We had one hundred and seventy-four victims in twenty-twenty-two compared to two hundred and thirty-three victims last year. Keep in mind, these incidents are counted per victim and not per incident. So, one, one assault incident can yield several victims, increasing the count. Also, research revealed that the victims and suspects often knew each other, whether it be a spouse, an acquaintance, a neighbor, or a classmate. In twenty-twenty-two, forty-two of the aggravated assaults were domestic violence related. Last year, in twenty-twenty-three, seventy-four of the victims of assaults were domestic violence related. This was a thirty percent, in total, it was a seventy-four increase in domestic violence-related assaults. And this is partial, some direction of why there is an increase regarding this, regarding this aggravated assaults. Also, thirty-nine of the victims, or seventy percents, seventeen percent were assaulted by a firearm, where someone was shot at, or a pistol was pointed at an individual or group. Of the aggravated assaults, thirty incidents had multiple victims, and this is also a factor in part of the increase. When it comes to robberies, we had a slight increase of ten percent. There was one hundred and eleven robberies in twenty-twenty-two compared to one hundred and twenty-two last year. More than forty-three of these, forty-three percent of these robberies were classified as strong-arm robberies, and the majority of robberies were aggravated shoplifting incidents, where the suspect used force of fear to facilitate the theft. Often, there was no injuries or to any of the victims. I'll move on to the next slide. It's crime against persons, or property, I'm sorry. In crimes against property, we had an overall increase of point zero, zero, four, so we'll say we were even. We have fourteen hundred and fifteen in twenty-twenty-two compared to fourteen hundred and twenty-one last year. Theft had a decrease of twenty-two percent. We had seven hundred and twenty-nine incidents in twenty-twenty-two compared to five hundred and sixty-seven last year. These thefts included grand theft, petty theft, vehicle burglaries, and vehicle part thefts, which included the catalytic converters. Our auto thefts had an increase of twenty-six percent. We had four hundred and ninety-two in twenty-twenty-two compared to six hundred and twenty-one last year. This increase in all thefts was seen throughout the surrounding cities and neighboring cities. One reason for the increase is the juveniles being, getting involved in these thefts, specifically targeting the Kia and Hyundai's models vehicles. We had arson. Our arson decreased by thirty-six percent. We had eleven in twenty-twenty-two compared to seven last year. There were no patterns for these fires. They're related to transients, trash fires, or vehicle fires. Our burglaries. Burglaries also had a, a large increase. We had an increase of twenty-three percent. We had one hundred and eighty-three incidents in twenty-twenty-two compared to two hundred and twenty-six last year. They were classified, one hundred and eighty were classified as commercial burglaries, and forty-six were residential burglaries. Although there was an increase of eighteen, there was a decrease in residential burglaries compared to the prior year, the overall increase in burglaries can be attributed to the forty percent increase in commercial burglaries. So, when it came to commercial burglaries, there was five top commercial burglaries that were targeted, businesses that were targeted, and there as follows. The first one was industrial manufacturing warehouse business. They were targeted thirty-one times last year. Business offices targeted nineteen times. Restaurants in a shopping area targeted sixteen times. Restaurants in a commercial district was targeted thirteen, and retail goods in a commercial district was targeted twelve. And most of the commercial burglaries occurred on the early morning shift. They were usually closed businesses between twelve AM to six AM. Next, we have our calls for service. Our calls for service had a slight decrease of two percent. We had eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety in twenty-twenty-two compared to seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three last year. Our nine-one call, nine-one-one calls increased by fifteen percent, from four hundred and fifty-six in twenty-twenty-two to five hundred and twenty-six last year. And our regular calls decreased by three percent, from seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four in twenty-twenty-two to seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-seven last year. So, when it comes to nine-one calls, it's not the nine-one-one call system that, that, that it went up. It's basically when our dispatcher designate this as an emergent call. So, that, that was an increase of fifteen percent. And what that's telling us, we leave its part, is the increase is related to our residents and our business owners being more involved in the public safety. They're, they're fed up regarding these thefts, crimes in progress, we're getting more calls for emergent nature, and that's why we see that increase of that fifteen percent. Our next is our response times. Our response times are categorized in three incidents: routine, priority, and emergent. Routine calls, routine incidents are calls that are non-priority in nature, usually report calls that do not require an immediate response. Priority call incidents are those that require an immediate response, but not a code three response. A code three is red lights and sirens. And our emergent incidents are anything requiring a code three response. This would include felony crimes in progress, life-threatening incidents, or traffic collisions with injuries. As you can see, we did have a decrease in our routine calls, a four point, a four point six percent decrease. We, we, it was from fifteen point four minutes to forty-eight point one minutes response time. Our priority calls had a ten percent increase, ten point three percent increase, from ten minutes, ten point seven minutes to eleven point eight minutes. And our emergency calls, emergent calls had an eight point five, eight point three percent increase from three point six minutes to three point nine minutes. The department thresholds for response times are sixty minutes for routine, twenty minutes for priority, and ten minutes for emergency. Although we are well below the threshold, we will, we will continue to work with the city staff to decrease these timelines. It appears the city's additional deployment regarding our community service officers responding to routine report calls and traffic collisions, and the reinstatement of the department's search program, where residents can file reports online, has already affected our routine calls, and as you can see, the decrease on our routine calls for service. Our next is arrests in Paramount. Our arrests, we had a fourteen percent decrease in all arrests. We had nine hundred and forty-three in twenty-twenty-two compared to eight hundred and forty-three last year. It's not because the deputies are not working. Part of the decrease may be attributed to my direction, promoting community policing and providing better customer service to our residents. Oftentimes, deputy responds to call with urgency and quickly handle it. I told the deputies to slow things down, carefully listen to our residents, be empathetic, and provide solutions to their concerns. Ultimately, we want to build relationships and trust with our residents. However, Lieutenant Morales and I will monitor our arrests to balance the quality of life issues and assertive proactive policing. So, what are we going to do with twenty-twenty-four? I can tell you right now, we're going to concentrate on enforcement efforts to target the increases of last year, which were aggravated assaults, burglaries, and auto thefts. It's been seven weeks so far of twenty-twenty-four. Not that it really matters, seven weeks is not, doesn't show anything, but we're down twenty percent, twenty-six percent already in Part One crimes in the first seven weeks. Our SA team, SAO team will provide, will be working with our operation Safe Streets, Yank detectives, and conducting targeted operation and parole compliance operations of those who have criminal histories of assaults. When it comes to our commercial burglaries, we're already working with our crime analysts and providing our SAO team and patrol deputies data of our hotspots for these commercial burglaries. The team will also adjust with their early morning shifts to conduct undercover operations of these targeted businesses. When it comes to our auto thefts, we believe we can drastically decrease our thefts with community education. As we all know, the Kia and Hyundai vehicles attribute to over forty-five percent of all our stolen vehicles. This is in part because of the lack of security software that these vehicles have. There is an updated software available for the owners through the dealership. It's a free, it's free of charge. One only needs to make an appointment with their local dealer and have that software installed. We'll continue to educate our residents regarding this software through social media and neighborhood watch meetings. And we've already reached out to one manufacturer. In the near future, we will host a large-scale anti-theft mobile clinic where owners can drive through and have their vehicle software updated, similar to the catalytic converter etching program. Although these clinics are done in a large regional area, I'll work with the city's public safety team to have one conducted in or near the city of Paramount. With that said, we know that most of the complaints you receive from the residents are not because of Part One crimes, but the quality of life issues. Our team will balance their time and assertive policing to address issues of street takeovers, illegal vending, loud parties, and traffic enforcement. In closing, I want to think, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the city council, city manager, the public safety team, and every member of the Paramount community. Your dedication to public safety and support of our deputies have not gotten unnoticed. Your commitment to create a safer city is outstanding and should be emulated by all cities. Thank you for your leadership, partnership, and support. Thank you, and God bless everyone. Uh, thank you, and God bless everyone, and I can take any questions this time.
All right. Thank you for that. And I think before I, you know, um, open up for questions or comments from my colleagues, I mean, no, I, I think, you know, I'm looking at my colleagues, and, you know, thank you. Thank you for the work you do. I mean, you guys, you know, we know that, you know, um, you guys are out there every day, you know, really, you know, we, we see, we see it, we hear it, and, you know, we, we, you are appreciated, um. So with that, um, questions or comments? I'm looking here and here. Excellent. On the side.
Yeah, I do, but, uh, you want to go first?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You go.
You want me to go?
Okay.
We're going to do rock, paper, scissors.
I've heard from, uh, commercial business owners of the increase of robberies, and I like what you're, what you mentioned about the increase. I hope that the business owners, there's one in particular, and I, he says he watches YouTube a day after, so I'm glad you're here, and I hope that he's hearing it loud and clear. Is there any, um, programs that you offer?
Excuse me, sorry. Any programs that you offer for businesses? I think Maggie might have a program where they get reimbursed if they upgrade maybe, uh, lights or, uh, a system. Can you please explain that?
Yes, of course. So we're very, um, excited to offer our business community a, uh, security rebate, uh, of, up to two thousand dollars. So, um, any business that would like to take advantage of this program is welcome to call Public Safety, and we'll, uh, go ahead and assist them with the rebate application.
Thank you, Maggie.
And usually when, when we do have a burglary with the deputy, the first responding deputy writes the report, takes the report. However, there is follow-up with our SAO team, with our detective, and we do kind of an assessment of what they can do to, to, to better fortify their business, and we always, uh, recommend, you know, obviously, the camera system, that the city provides a rebate, uh, lighting, uh, things of that nature. So we always give some kind of, uh, helpful tips to prevent it in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Captain, and I want to thank our deputies because they do a fantastic job. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Captain Holden, excellent presentation. My questions were answered through your narrative, and thank you for all you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Questions, a couple of questions. Um, so actually, you came back and you did answer what you're going to do in two thousand and twenty-four with some of the increases, so I appreciate that. Can we go back to the calls? I know we had a conversation about, um, a few months ago, we were talking about the call volumes that come in.
Yes.
If a person generates a call, it only clicks it one time, right, for the incident?
That's great. So, so, yeah, I think we called, we talked about party calls, maybe, or that?
Just like a, a party call, or just in general, if it's for the same situation that's happening, the call is clicked one time. So I'm just wondering, how does that affect the data here? So you're saying that the call volume is like down or high? How, doesn't that, that get affected if it's, like, if I called five times, it gets, again, reported once? So how does that?
That does affect it. So if we get a call on a certain incident...
I think it's the mic. Here. There you go.
Apologize. So we get a call on a certain incident, we'll just, we'll just say that the traffic, the traffic accident at, at the corner, at the corner of Alondra and Paramount. We're going to respond, it's, it's, it's an emergent call, the call's going to come out, we'll probably get three or four calls within one minute.
Sure.
But we're only going to type in one call. So those three or four calls, it's only going to be classified as one call.
On your data.
Yes, on our data. So, so, yeah, that's how it'll affect it, but it's still, the ultimate goal is how many calls for that particular item. I don't know if it's five people calling, it's still that one item, that, that traffic collision.
Yeah, speaking of calls. Okay. I, okay, so I just...
Okay.
I got you.
Captain, if I may just add, for the, uh, street racing, we are accounting the number of calls on the narrative, so please note that, um, any calls in which we believe we want to track, the Lakewood Station dispatch team is assisting us in documenting that, so that is being tracked. It's just a little different than what is being presented tonight with the uniform crime report.
Sure.
Thank you.
And that, that'll be on the calls narrative. We've have instructed our dispatchers, it's, it's specifically in the, in the city of Paramount only, that if you receive these certain calls, whether it's five calls, you're going to put one call, but then you're going to put additional four callers regarding the same.
That means when we look at twenty-four data to twenty, so it's going to be increased because of that, correct? So I don't, or it wouldn't be if you're adding those.
Yes, no, um, they're basically the system. We can't change their, uh, dispatch system, but I know the, uh, the need that council wishes to know, well, how many of our residents are reporting these violations? So when we receive that information, the dispatchers are actually making a note. So when I review the call for service, I'm able to depict, was it four, uh, calls that came in, or was it twelve calls that came in? So in-house, it's being managed. It's definitely not something that Lakewood Station is able to provide.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So this is our report, so no action is needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So we have another public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing to resolution...
Madam Mayor.
Adam, yeah, we have one more under Public Safety, item number sixteen.
Yes, I apologize. So we'll go ahead and continue with, um, our report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, for decades now, we've had a program called the Citizens Satisfaction Survey for Public Safety Service. This tool really allows our customers to rate the level of service they receive from our public safety officers, both sworn and non-sworn. And as in previous years, this year's numbers look really good, so with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Maggie Mattson, to share the, the numbers with you. Maggie?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, I will be providing you with an overview of our two thousand and twenty-three Public Safety Resident Satisfaction Survey. As a way of background, Public Safety started collecting survey data of routine law enforcement and public safety services in nineteen ninety-seven. We hope the in-the-line-of-duty reports give city council a good understanding of the service quality that is being provided to our Paramount residents. Public safety staff conducts quality assurance phone calls daily. Calls are randomly selected. It is important to note that staff does not contact anyone who has been a victim of an aggravated incident. Two calls are made during the day shift, and two are made during the afternoon. The information collected is then entered into a database so that we can extract this information for this annual review. The calls we place are scripted for consistency, and we ask a total of five questions. Each party is asked to rate the service provided by dispatch staff, the response time, the service provided by the handling deputy or a community service officer, and to give their impression of the overall service. For the first four questions, the responses are limited to very satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, or indifferent. The last question is simply a yes or no response. So here are the results of the survey for two thousand and twenty-three. The overall rating, which is what we consider to be the most important, it totals ninety-nine point-two percent. So we know that our residents are either satisfied or very satisfied with the service Our goal is to measure and evaluate the data to ensure that Public Safety is providing quality customer service. Based on the overall rating for the past five years, Public Safety is pleased to report that we continue to positively meet the needs of the community. And this concludes my report. I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Questions?
No, Madam Mayor.
No. All right. There is no action needed on this. Now we're going to go into the, um, the public hearing.
Yes, we are, Madam Mayor.
We can go to open that, and if we can, please get the report.
Absolutely. Now moving over to planning, uh, away from Public Safety for a little bit here. This next item is, uh, general plan amendment, as you mentioned, uh, for the properties on Colorado Avenue, just south of Jefferson. Um, we have an inconsistency here that we'd like to correct in this neighborhood. So our proposal before you tonight is to bring the general plan use designation into conformance with the current zoning code, as well as the current land use that currently exists out there. Uh, we also revised a public notice as the council had suggested to us that we send out regarding this hearing, and I put a copy of that in your Friday memo a couple of weeks ago. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Planning Director, Mr. John Carver, who will walk you through that. John?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and council members. This item is a request for a, a general plan amendment from industrial to multiple-family residential at one-five-five-two-nine Colorado Avenue. We are also recommending inclusion of the east and west side of the fifteen-five-hundred block of Colorado, and four properties on Jefferson Street, and two properties on Madison Street. This general plan amendment, as John, um, mentioned, will make the general plan consistent with the zoning, and will prevent industrial uses from encroaching into a stable residential neighborhood, which, again, is already zoned, multiple-family residential. And this general plan amendment will also allow for the construction of five single-family homes at one-five-five-two-nine Colorado. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this item to the city council at its January third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. The city council adopted the general plan in two thousand and seven. The general plan includes elements such as land use, housing, health and safety, economic development, and transportation. This is a photo of the site where the five single-family homes were approved by the Development Review Board in January. These are photos of the properties we recommend to be included in this general plan amendment. This is an aerial of the site where the five single-family homes are proposed, and the other properties we recommend to be included in the general plan amendment. This shows the existing general plan land use designation, which is industrial and is part of the central industrial district. This shows the proposed general plan land use designation, which is multiple-family This indicates the existing zoning, which is multiple-family residential. And this shows the existing land use, which is almost entirely a mix of residential uses. The design of the five homes meets city standards and will contain decorative roof material, varying building projections and roof lines, a stucco exterior and stone accents, as approved by the Development Review Board in January. This is the site plan that was approved by the Development Review Board. And this is an aerial of the project. In summary, the general plan amendment will allow for the development of a five-unit single-family housing project. The project will not be out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, and finally, the general plan amendment will prevent industrial uses from encroaching into a stable residential A revised public hearing notice in English and Spanish was mailed to property owners and tenants within five hundred feet of the project area. The public hearing notice was also mailed for the Planning Commission hearing. The public hearing notice was hand-delivered to residents in the project area for tonight's hearing, and additionally, the public hearing notice was hand-delivered for the Planning Commission hearing. And we're recommending that you read by, read by title only and adopt Resolution two four zero zero four. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Do we have any comments in favor?
No, Madam Mayor, there have been no comments submitted for this item.
Okay, so none, none in favor and none opposed? Okay, I need a motion to close the hearing?
Don't move.
Second roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgadoio?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes. Okay. Now, do we have any questions or comments on the item? If not, I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgadoio?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes. All right. So we will go ahead and move on to number eighteen. May we please have the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is time for our annual audit. This is something that we've been consistent with. Um, the bottom line is our books are balanced, and there were no findings in this independent third-party audit that was performed on our books, so this is good. Our books are clean. So, um, but back up with us tonight is Ms., uh, Frances Quo. She's a partner at the auditing firm of the Poon Group, and she will walk you through the, um, annual comprehensive financial report. Hi, Frances. Hi, Gin.
Presentation prepared. Is it on the... Do I have the clicker? Should we help me click? So thank you, Gin, for the opportunity to present the, the annual comprehensive financial report to the city. So tonight, I will go through the scope of work and talk about a couple required communication for the audit, the overview of the financial statement, and of course, the other results. So for the fiscal year, uh, June thirty of two thousand and twenty-three, uh, we performed the audit for the city's financial statement. We also performed the agree-upon procedure on the after-school education and safety program and, uh, appropriation limit schedule for fiscal year June thirty of two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, and also report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance in accordance with the government auditing standards. So some of the required communication, including our responsibility. So we are responsible to, uh, perform the audit, inform and express opinion about the financial statement that's been prepared by the management with the oversight, um, so to make sure that they are fairly presented in all material respect. And we'll plan to perform the audit to obtain a reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. So during the audit process, we evaluate the internal control over financial reporting. So we conduct the audit, uh, start doing the summer timeframe, uh, evaluating the internal control, different transaction cycles, revenue, cash receivable, financial reporting, payroll expenditure, and then to see if there's any internal control issue. And during year-end phase of the audit, we do substantive testing, analytical procedure, and then, um, based on the internal control evaluation, and to, and then also to design our, our, the audit procedure. We also required to conclude where there are any, uh, condition or event that would raise doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern. And of course, we're here to communicate with those charge, charge of governance, so thank you for having, having me here. So we also comply with all the relevant ethical requirement regarding independence. So when the management prepared the financial statement, there are a couple of things that we want to bring your attention. So number one is, uh, number one is the significant accounting policy. So the city had disclosed all the significant accounting policy in the note one to the financial statements, and there are no new accounting policies that were adopted during the year, so nothing was changed during the fiscal year. Um, also, there are some significant estimate that's used by the management when they prepare a financial statement, including the investment fair value, that's some of the estimates, and, uh, a useful line of the capital asset. So that will determine the depreciation and amortization expenses for the capital assets, and of course, the net pension liability and the net op liability. Those are the two big liabilities for the city's financial statement that involve actuarial assumptions, or that involve estimates as well. So of course, couple sensitive disclosures in the financial statement include note one, which summarized the significant accounting policy that management used to prepare the financial statement that will go through all the significant transaction to talk about what are the policies used by the management. And note seven and eight are related to the city's pension plan and other post-employment benefits, which is the, uh, related to the retiree health benefits. And, uh, related to misstatements, there was no uncorrected misstatement that's reported during the audit. We also didn't note that any, uh, consultation by the management with some third-party accountant related to any auditing or accounting matters, so there, there's not, not a need to have a second opinion. And we didn't have any, uh, significant difficulty working with the management in conducting the audit, and there was no disagreement with management, whether it related to accounting treatment or auditing, uh, other procedures performed. So the next couple of slides, uh, I will talk about the, uh, summarize some of the financial statement amounts, uh, since the financial statement is a really big book, like, over a hundred and fifty pages long, so it's kind of keeps on summarize, uh, overview of the financial statement. So when we look at the city as a whole, we'll talk about that, talk about it as a government-wide summary. So right now, we're... So right now, we're looking at the net position of the city, which is the equity account of the city. So the city ended the year with $107 million for the governmental activities. So that include the general fund, the special revenue fund, the capital project, and the internal service fund. And for the business activity, which is the city's water fund, ended the year with $18.5 million. So the combined net position at $126 million at June 30 of 2023. So with that, about $93 million are for the investment in capital asset, for the city's capital asset, the infrastructure that you have. And $12.7 million are the restricted, mainly related to the grant restriction, external restriction that you have to be using the funding for specific purposes. And with the $28.6 million of the unrestricted net position can be used at the city's discretion. So this summarized the city's operation for the year ended June 30 of 2023. So for the expenses, the city had 65... almost $66 million of expenses for the running the program, whether to for public safety, for public water, for the water. So that's the total expenses of the almost $66 million. And that is supported by the program revenue, including the charge for services, capital grant, and operating grant, $41 million. So the net cost of service at $26.5 million. And the general revenue are the unrestricted revenue, including tax revenue, investment earning, those are not restricted. So the city had the $42.5 million of general revenue for the fiscal year June 30 of 2023. So with that, so the city increased the net position, which will increase your equity by $17.6 million for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2023. And then you can see for the business activity, the program revenue, as I mentioned, include $12.5 million of revenue. $12.5 million of program revenue include $8.3 million charge for service, which is the water rate that's been charged to the residents using the water. And $3.4 million operating grant from OPAH Fund to help provide some additional funding for purchased waters. And then $0.8 million also from OPAH Fund to put in, related to the capital projects. Now with the general fund, which is the city's main operating fund, so fiscal year ended 2023, the city had fund balance of $47 million compared to 2022 of about $30 million for general fund. So there's an increase of $17 million in fund balance for the general fund. So this slide is about the operation of the general fund in comparison to prior year. As you can see, the revenue for the general fund increased by about $5 million from $41 million to $47 million. And expenditure incurred has some decrease, about $4 million decrease in expenditure. And the other financing sources and uses, there are some financing sources and uses. And then so the city ended for the fiscal year 2023, there's an increase of $17.3 million in change of fund balance. So the next two slides are about the city's pension and other post-employment benefit. Just keeping my pension and OPAH, they are one year behind. Based on the accounting, based on the reporting of the measurement date, it's not the same as the financial statement date. So for fiscal year 2023, you are actually looking at measurement day of '22. So for measurement day of 2022, which is for fiscal year 2023, the city's net pension liability is $11 million compared to $12 million in 2021. And with the very top row, that total pension liability, that's a purely actuarial calculated amount. From CalPERS, they're saying that the total pension liability increased from $100 million to $108 million largely due to the change in discount rate. So they changed the discount rate from 7.15% to 6.9%. So with the decrease in the discount rate, so that greatly increased that total pension liabilities. And the fiduciary net position, it went from $88 million to $96 million. So a lot of the government, you don't see increase in fiduciary net position in 2022 measurement date because the market wasn't doing so well. But because the city made a contribution toward unfunded liability by issuing a pension obligation bond, so you see the $17.7 million contributed to CalPERS actually increased your fiduciary net position. Of course, with some market adjustment. So you ended with $96 million for 2022 measurement date and had the net pension liability at $11.6 million. With the funding ratio at roughly 90% for measurement date 2022 compared to 87% of 2021. So with the other post-employment benefit, the city's OPAH liability remained pretty consistent at $14.4 million compared to $14.9 million in '22, which is also one year behind. And then the fiduciary net position went down slightly from $8.1 million to $7.8 million. So the total, the net pension, net OPAH liability ended at $7 million for measurement day 2022 compared to $6.2 million at 2021, with the funding ratio of 52%. And the contribution made during both fiscal year roughly at $1.5, $1.6 million. So other result, so at the end of the audit, we conclude that we issue a modified opinion. So what that means is financial statement are fairly presented in all material respect, and significant accounting policy has been consistently applied by management. All the estimate as used are reasonable and the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. We also did not report any internal control-related matter as we communicated in the internal control letter. So with that, conclude my presentation. I'm more than happy to answer any question you may have.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or comments? No, Madam Mayor.
Great presentation, though. Where were you when I had stats class, economics? I could have called you. Thank you for that.
And that was receive and file. Do we need a motion for that? No, right? Okay. So then we are moving along. So next, we have, this is another approval for traffic control for a 5K we have coming.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you know, from a presentation that you heard back in September, the annual 5K race is back. And we'll also have a 1K component to go along with it. And that event is set for June 1st, so mark your calendars. Before you denies a traffic control plan for this exciting event, and we're also asking for your approval on the contract for traffic control services. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, to sort this all out for you. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and members of the council. At the September 12, 2023 meeting, the City Council approved the proposed 5K, 1K event, which is scheduled for Saturday, June 1st. As a reminder, the 5K course begins at 3rd Street on Paramount Boulevard and finishes near All America City Way in front of Paramount Park. The 1K course begins and ends at All America City Way at Paramount Park. Our insurance provider, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, or CJPIA for short, recommends the preparation and approval of a traffic control plan by the city's traffic engineer to ensure the street closures and relevant temporary traffic signage used during the event are safe and compliant. Since the 5K or 1K event is new and requires street closures, our contract traffic engineer prepare a traffic control plan for the event that requires approval by the City Council to proceed with the closure. Therefore, this report requires two parts. One, approval of the traffic control plan for the new 5K, 1K event. And two, a word of contract for traffic control services. You've seen this map before at our September meeting, where this event was discussed and approved. As you can see on the left image, we have Rose Grants at the top, Paramount Boulevard to the left or west, and Downey Avenue to the right of that image or the east. And of course, Alondra to the south. Just as a reminder, again, the 5K route begins on 3rd Street at Paramount Boulevard and finishes near All America City Way in front of Paramount Park. And the 1K route is displayed on the image to the right. It begins and ends at All America City Way at Paramount Park. Staff put together a request for proposals for traffic control services for three of the city's annual events, all of which involve street closures. This includes the 5K, 1K event, the Heritage Festival, and the city's street lighting ceremony. Having a sole contractor to provide traffic control services will save the city time and resources while ensuring the city's specifications and requirements are met. The term of this agreement will be for two years, with the option to renew administratively for two one-year extensions. This will allow the city an opportunity to evaluate the effectiveness during this period. On Thursday, January 11th, the city published the request for proposals in the Paramount Journal and on the city's website. Bits were open on Thursday, February 1st. Two bits were received ranging from $55,355 to $70,310. The apparent low bid was submitted by statewide Traffic Safety and Science, Inc. in the amount of $55,355. The table includes the bid amount and a 10% contingency for a total cost of around $60,900. Funding for this project was included in the fiscal year 24 Community Promotion Operations Budget in the amount of $51,850 in general funds. The total project amount of $60,900 exceeds the already appropriated amount. Therefore, an additional $9,050 will be needed for these services and can be funded using general funds. So as indicated earlier, this is a two-part report. And as such, the recommendation action is A, approve the traffic control plan for the 5K, 1K event. And B, appropriate an additional $9,050 from the available general fund balance. And two, a worthy contract for the traffic control services. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Adriana. Is there any questions or comments? Okay.
No.
Do I need two separate motions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
So we will go ahead, and so the first one, I need a motion to approve the proposed traffic control plan for the 5K, 1K event.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. All right, now for portion B.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. All right. Next, we have another approval. Can we go ahead and get the report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this year's budget includes the replacement of the sound system as part of a multi-year project improvement plan for the heavily-used gymnasium at Paramount Park. So I'll now turn it over to Mr. David Johnson, our Community Services Director, who will handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John. Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, our gymnasium is up for some additional repairs. This gymnasium is very important to our community. It's very important to the city. We do run programs there. We have some special events there, and it's used by the adjacent Paramount Park Middle School. The audio system, you can see on the right-hand side, you see the stack on the bottom there. That, the bottom right, that's the original speakers. So maybe that will go in the museum.
Thank you. I'll take it.
And then you see on the left, that's the control panel. None of it works anymore. It gave its 50-year try. So we have gone through, as John mentioned, a multi-year phase to repair the gym. You see, three years ago, we repaired the restrooms and made those really nice. And then last year, we completed the flooring improvements, painting, and lighting. And you see on that top photo how nice that gym looks. What is still coming up, though, is obviously repairing and replacing the sound system. You see that curtain in that top photo. That's going to be upgraded as well in another phase. And then the attic is that area that's above the storage room. That will be turned into an exercise location for adults. As their kids play basketball, they can pop up there and exercise. So Vidiflow LLC is currently the primary audiovisual contractor that the city uses. They've installed now pretty much all the systems throughout the city. So in staying with that, we want to make sure that we have consistency in matching the type of equipment and the maintenance and support that they provide. So we are looking at providing this contract to Vidiflow. This is a contract over $40,000, so it does require council approval. We will be using our standard professional services agreement. The contract is for $47,435, and I'm happy to say that is well below budget. So there is not a fiscal impact in the 2324 CAP budget. And we are recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Is there a second? Do we have a second?
Hands down, yes, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. I think Councilmember Olmos really wants those speakers, is what it is. I think that's what it is.
Okay, so you get first dibs on the mic?
Yes.
And throwing the curtain as well. All right, so number 21, actually, it's a resolution at 24003. Can we please get the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we received grant money from the state of California for some park improvements. And in order to get these funds, we need your approval on a resolution. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Community Services Director, Yesseni Gin. Yesseni?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Previously, the city of Paramount actually received specific grants in the state's budget for park renovations in 2021. If you recall, we've actually received $1.25 million in fiscal year '22 in the state California budget. And now, once again, in 2023, the state of California actually budgeted specific grant allocations of $1.85 million to the city of Paramount. So we're very excited once again. But before we can actually do anything with that money, we actually have Resolution 24003 before year tonight to authorize the city to file for this application. We've allocated the $1.85 million to Parkers Park exterior renovations, which I'm sure will come back to you on a later date in regards to how we've been discussing how the exterior renovations will happen. I know that Afig and Sarah and our team have met previously, so we're excited to bring that to you pretty soon. Summit of this resolution to the State Department of Parks and Recreation will allow the contract for use for these funds to be used. Funds are allocated in the FY 2023 budget and our city's CAP budget. So with that, it's recommended to read by title only and adopt Resolution 24003. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions or comments?
No. Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. All right, and now we have another approval. Can we please get the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, last item under new business is the creation of a City Council Committee on a Community Aesthetics, as expressed at the goal-setting session. The primary focus of this committee will be to provide staff with feedback on design options for the downtown holiday lights. Future duties of this committee could expand into other areas where detailed council direction is needed by staff. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor, for the appointments.
Okay, so I know that Councilmember Lemmons expressed her interest in this. And I'm actually looking to my colleagues.
Would like to express interest.
Okay, is anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay, so then it'll be go ahead, Councilmember Lemmons and Vice Mayor Delgado. Okay, and then do we need a motion?
We do. We need two.
Okay, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes.
And just to confirm, that motion was to create the ad hoc committee and to appoint Councilmember Lemmons and Vice Mayor Delgado to the committee.
Correct.
Yes. All right, and moving along. So this is a little different, but now part of our meeting is we're actually going into the successor agency for the Paramount Redevelopment Agency. And I need a motion for the consent calendar.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. All right, and now we have comments and committee reports from the council. And we'll go ahead, and we're going to start over here with Councilmember Quara Stallings, please.
I'd like to go.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay, Madam Mayor, along with my colleagues, musical chairs, I attended the League of California City New Mayors and Council Members Academy for 2024. At this conference, I take away, to become a successful community, it requires effective governance and management. I feel we, the council and city staff, have always strived for... I feel we, the council and city staff, have always strived for excellence and perfection to become the successful community that we are. I attended our Paramount Park Playground Grand Opening. To David, Yesenia, and all the staff, the whole event was phenomenal and very classy. It was just a beautiful sight to have children and parents gathered together to celebrate their new playground. And a very special thank you to Ken Masumoto for taking all the wonderful photos, which will speak volumes in the years to come. I attended our annual twenty twenty-four State of the City Luncheon, sponsored by our wonderful Paramount Chamber of Commerce. Listening to the progress of our city, school district, and chamber was very uplifting. Thank you, chamber, until next year. Thank you. Madam Mayor, this concludes my report.
All right, all right, I'm looking for everybody. Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
I attended the same events as Vice Mayor. I just have a couple additional ones. I attended, uh, shout out to Paramount High School Girls Basketball. They made it all the way to the playoffs and CIF round one, but they didn't make it to round two. So I would like to congratulate all the girls that have played on the, um, varsity di, division. Thank you, girls. You did an awesome job. You're dedicated, and your, uh, sportsmanship really shows to everyone. And, um, a shout out to the lead coaches, Mr. and Mrs. Polk are the main coaches for the varsity team. Now, they were in Division Four, now they moved up to Division One. Congratulations to the Paramount High School Girls Team. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Olmos.
All right, um, I attended those events as well, but I think we, we did forget that we all attended the Clearwater PTA Legislative, um, Platform. That was a really good meeting for us to attend. Um, I think it really opened my eyes to what the school district needs to go through for funding and some of the barriers they have when it comes to legislation as well. So Assemblymember Mar, Marzut, am I saying that? Marzucci? He's the Chair of Education, so he actually attended, and he was actually, um, sharing the same ventures in a sense, what's coming to the state budget, that there will be a decrease this year, so as cities are not requesting money, the schools will not, you know, they're kind of in the same boat as us. So I thought that was really important that we win and actually to show the school district that we're there to support them. Um, I also did not attend, but I did watch in, um, the video for the, um, the Joint Commission on Retail Theft that was held, um, this was the second one that was held, the first one was held in Sacramento. This one was held in West Hollywood last Friday. Um, very interesting conversations. They actually had panels of like deputies and sheriffs, and then they had the assembly members that serve on the commission for the retail theft and public safety. There was a lot of conversation back and forth, and it was kind of like, we didn't know what direction they're headed in, because I think it's still all new. But there was a lot of talk about maybe adding property damage, um, to the charges. There was talk of, a lot of talk about Proposition Forty-seven, of course. Um, they were talking about cross jurisdiction when it came to enforcement for attorney generals. Um, again, it was just, there was a lot that I didn't know, and it was really good for, for me to understand how the chambers are involved, the public, um, public safety is involved. But they talked about this program, Maggie, and I wanted to bring this to you. It's called Program Lead. Have you heard of that? Um, actually, it's, it's, yeah?
I actually have not, but I'm taking notes.
Yeah, okay, so it's called Program Lead, and it's through the county, and it's actually a preventative, um, division that helps, um, to stop re-entry. Um, so it's like a third option that they give to, um, LA County Sheriff. So instead of going to jail or arrested, it's a third option to help them, you know, whether it's mental health or drug abuse. But they call themselves a third option, um, and they actually go out with deputies, um, and assist these, you know, people that might, might need this resource. So it's gone, it's called Program Lead, and it was really interesting, and the actual advisor was there speaking about it, so I wanted to share that with you. Um, the other, I had a question for Adriana. So with all the rain happening lately, um, I was reading, um, articles, um, how do we like look at potholes? I mean, do we kind of like, kind of go through because we had so much rain?
Yes, answer, sorry, is this on? Councilmember, uh, Olmos, yes, we actually look at that as it's happening.
Okay.
Throughout the rain events, our crews are out and about checking catch basins, cle, clearing catch basins. Usually right after the, the rain event is when we notice them the most.
The most, right.
And as those come up, um, our guys are quickly patching those.
Got it.
If it requires more, um, if it's too deep, then they'll have to come back at a later time and fix them. But usually what they do is they put a temporary fix until they can make a more permanent.
Okay, I just knew with the rain, I'm sure there was a lot of activity going on, but never, didn't hear any issues with it. I was just wondering, education wise. And I just really want to say Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. It is tomorrow, so thank you for the flowers. Appreciate that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, so like always, we're, we're busy. Um, so there was a couple of things actually, um, at the, we're not calling coffee with the mayor, it was the chats next. Um, we had a couple suggestions there. Um, one of them was, um, there was residents that say that they're, they walk their dogs at, in the evening and that, um, there are just, you know, people on just regular bicycles on like the sidewalks and that, you know what I mean? That it, you know, they don't, you know, watch for them, and they know they're supposed to be on the street. So maybe we can create some type of safety campaign or something, um, to address that, because they said that they, it's, it's a regular thing that they've, that they encounter. And kind of tying into that, um, there was also suggestion for like an evening-type walking club, um, for people that can't go to the morning on the weekends when, when we do that, but just, um, I know in the morning, it's, you know, the, it's, the Roadrunners, it's a senior thing, but, I mean, these are just residents that said, you know, I mean, if there was something that, you know, we could kind of organize for just evening walks with just, you know, a group of people, so that, um, and, you know, we, we said we would definitely, um, bring it up. Um, the State of the City, um, it was, it was really a great event. Um, there was a lot of people there. The rain really didn't stop anybody, so it was great. And it's always such a great event, not just for us to really highlight what we do and let, um, you, you know, our business community and just our stakeholders know what we're doing, but for us to hear what the school district is doing and some of the great things that they're doing as well, um, and the businesses. So it really is one of those like, just top, um, events that, you know, we get to all come together. And it helps people that are not from our city that come in to see how we work together and how we are just a team. Um, so there was that. And, um, the other thing is, I'm going to look at Adriana, and again, thank the Public Works team because they have been so busy today. Um, so I don't know if, you know, if, you know, I mean, those of us that kind of drive around the city. Our city got hit really hard with graffiti, um, overnight. And so I sent Adriana, I mean, I, I was calling her in the morning, and I was texting her, and my kids send me pictures, and now they're like, Mom, this is... So if the residents see that, I mean, go to the app and report it, call it in, because it just, I mean, we can't be everywhere at once. Because I know I got to a point that I was like, okay, I'd better go home, or I'm going to be late to, you know, my next thing. But, um, thank you because we take pride in, you know, I say, yeah, graffiti in Paramount, it doesn't last twenty-four hours. Um, it's rare when it is up, oh, more than a few hours, really. So please really, you know, thank the team and, uh, for that, and for, I mean, during the rain, I, I know we were saying that they were out there and they were kind of on call. Um, I think a few, few days before, you know, we saw the images and filling sandbags and, you know, that type of thing. So really thank them. I know that, you know, they, they've, they've been busy. They've been really busy, so, um, I think that is, that is all I have. So, um, comments from staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, just a couple things, um, in regards to what you're saying. Um, we are going to do a social media, a post very soon about all the hard work our Public Works guys did um, during the rains and even patching, huh, patching potholes dur, in the rain. So, so we will have that, uh, with the, uh, added, um, information about how to report them, because we definitely need, need the help, so. And then also, um, we had an earthquake, um, and I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, um, Andrew Vialponto, to tell you a little bit about Nixle and how that worked. Andrew?
Thank you, John. Uh, yes, I'll just spend a, just a few seconds speaking about a very important communications tool that we have. Um, we spend a lot of time, uh, talking about all the great things we do in our city, and we have a lot of, uh, communications channels that we use, like our Instagram and Facebook. Um, and fortunately, we don't have to, uh, use this other one as much as we need to, on which we primarily use for emergencies and to, uh, communicate with our residents about urgent matters happening in the city. Um, Nixle, it's spelled N-I-X-L-E, uh, it's an important communications tool that we use. Um, as John mentioned, on Friday, we had a four-point-five, uh, magnitude earthquake centered in the Malibu area. Um, we, the city of Paramount, we, uh, issued a Nixle alert, um, to all the subscribers. Um, Nixle allows residents to receive these notifications via text message or email or phone call. Um, so I just kind of want to plug that. Uh, we'll be sending out targeted messages on our social media encouraging residents, uh, to subscribe, um, just because of the, uh, importance of, uh, communications tool like that. So I'll just rattle off a few ways, uh, just for the record. Uh, you can text our zip code, nine zero seven two three, two triple eight, triple seven, eight eight eight, seven seven seven, uh, to register. Or you can visit our city website at paramountcity.com, under the How Do I tab? Uh, there's a register for Nixle alerts. And then, uh, also under the Government tab of our city website, um, just navigate to the Public Safety page, and you'll find, um, the menu for Nixle. So, thank you.
All right, so with that, um, we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at five PM here at the council chamber. Have a good night, everyone.